Okay, well, we're called to order the Yenko County Board of Commissioners's informal work session for September 4th, 2018. And we do not have a work session, but we do have a department update and our Health and Human Services Director Silas Hollerins-Dyatt is here to do the honors. Hi, Silas.
Hello, please.
We have a couple of agenda items that if anyone in Lowberg, in the stand, or anybody had any questions they could address.
Yeah, sure, we can conclude with that. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Sure. So I have three things, just real brief space update. We are nearing the lobby completion at the main Evans Center, our Adult Behavior Health Center. And I think well served by Joe and his team. And contractor, we're just running through the final punch slips, moving furniture back in and it should be up. And ready to go, so that's good. We are on track now with the Davis Street remodel, which is directly across the street. And Bruce at Integrity Builders is our general contractor on that project. And should be on time or perhaps a little early with anticipated use in January. So this fall is really the project pull-up.
The one pelted out here.
It's the one.
Just finishing this one over here.
Yep.
And now the one, the new building?
Mm-hmm, 621 Davis.
Okay.
To, if you just go due west right on that, yeah. And we are thinking that in the interim, just a bit of a heads up, if it all comes together as planned, we will be coming back to the board with a short-term temporary contract to put a modular building in the parking lot. It'll just alleviate a little bit of space issues for a classroom, actually, with an ADA ramp and all that. Just for a number of months to get us through the fall into the early winter, essentially.
In the parking lot where?
In that same area, so in the Evans parking lot where the two pods have been. If you've been driving by or you've seen it, Joe and his crew have had these couple portable units for storage right there and they're now out, but it'll be in the same place.
Oh, sure.
So we're working with the city on a permit process and things like that. Christians are working on contracts. So I mention it because it may be back here hopefully in the next week or two.
Hopefully.
So it's a heads up. But all of that sequence together, and really the third update around space is that at the same time that we do all of that, Joe and Ken and Lindsay and I met last week to look at phase two of that remodel of the Evans facility, which is the northeast wing that has a larger HVAC project and a few walls that need to be moved, but mainly it's an HVAC project that's on the tap over from the list. So we're going to be busy, you know, just that those teams which have grown in the last few years and there's been, you know, new staff and orienting people to new space and how they do the work. And then on top of it, we've had our clients coming in at different access points. Lobby being remodeled are all good things, but folks have been patiently waiting for it all to be completed and it'll be another year probably of remodels to get us where we need to be. But the next six months being sort of the most intensive, I think, to finish this other project. And that's just a portion of what we're doing right now, but I thought a state's update right here on this campus would be good. We're doing some other planning. It's possible that some of our other needs in Newburgh or other analysis could nest in the other countywide planning. We'll have to wait and see if that comes to fruition.
How about West Valley, anything moving on down there?
Yeah, we do in partnership with others. So the main projects that were partners to are the expansion, of course, of Lutheran doing work to get their family place, the leaf nursery established, and also their mental health clinic, which we've supported along with some school-based service expansion that they're helping with across the county and dedicated directly to elementary schools across the county. And then in the furthest west of West Valley, up in Lowryna, in that K-12 education system with Carrie Zimruck as superintendent, there's been discussion about would that be a good environment for some of those services to co-locate? And we already have a school-based health center and the county has services at both those schools, Sheridan and Lowryna. So I think there's some discussion about even more healthcare access that other organizations, Lutheran or other medical providers might help with as well. So nothing very concrete, other than an emerging housing possibility too, but I don't have enough to share, I don't have enough with the housing project that could come here yet. I just, I don't know all the details. But there are things that are targeted for, I'll just say, increased access to services more broadly, but mostly is through partnership. It wouldn't necessarily be the county going at it and trying to establish a new access point that we would solely.
Just a concern because even though it's a smaller amount of our population, it's the largest amount, you know, percentage-wise of the kinds of services needed are centered down there. And when you look at the overall population, it's completely out of whack as far as the needs. So I just want to make sure that we are giving some attention to that part of the county.
The funding, Lutheran's funding is, how is that going for sure? How are they going to, how are they going to cover all those and what's our involvement in that?
Well, there are different lines of business with different scopes or a different target population. And all of those then have different payers, right? So the primary payer for the school service expansion and the mental health services that are provided in Sheridan is Medicaid. So the UHL CCO insurance that passes through the county through our contractual arrangements and then we help manage a service array for the community around behavioral health. That's that body of work and that's one area that they're expanding. There are some other funds related to the CCO funding stream that are more focused on prevention. A portion of those are helping to support some of the things that Lutheran has done for a long period of time, like their parenting classes, their Evans-based parenting classes and their postpartum depression program. And a little bit of funds are targeted towards the relief nursery. But then probably the biggest bulk of the county's public dollars were the dollars that went in this year as part of the seed money for the West Valley expansion, the $100,000 that the Board of Commissioners and election committee allocated to them. And then all of that leverages other funds that they draw down that are independent of what I'll say the Medicaid monies or the UHL CCO monies. So then the ongoing sustainability is dependent upon them drawing those other funds down, whether those are foundations, some of the monies that they get directly allocated through what I believe to be is a startup process that's tied to the public funds that they get. And then they do a lot of leverage, like, not foundations, but actual, what's the right term? Just the fundraising efforts that they do right here in our community, like their capital campaign, that's what I was thinking of. So if they actually get a facility where they want to say, "Look, we need capital to create this thing" versus we're going to have a church donate the space or we're working with the school district to cite something on their property, all of which I think are some of the things they're exploring.
Wasn't our $100,000 dedicated to a brick-and-mortar type of structure?
Well, so that they could access funds going forward, they were not able to do anything and get those funds yearly, didn't.
But that's what it, it was for facility, not for program, was it not?
It was for facility and then the program money would follow, is my understanding, is that right?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, I wasn't party to that process as much, but I know there is an allocation where they have to show a certain amount of local funds to leverage.
Right, no, I understand, but it was my understanding that we were providing funding to facilitate them getting a facility to remove that program in the West Valley, which is critical.
Totally, but it's still.
It is seed money, if you will.
But I want to come back to something that you said, Commissioner Premzic, in that there is great need in West Valley in figuring out how to provide services in a way that's fiscally responsible is where we're, that's where we're focusing our energy. Because like in 2014 and '15, when we saw the ACA expansion happen in Oregon, our leadership team at HHS looked at clinic access in Sheridan specifically. And after some pretty careful analysis of the client population that we were currently serving, we did surveys with them, we did a bunch of things to look at the data and try to get data driven around it. We elected not to try to expand out in West Valley at that moment in time. And there was a bunch of reasons why, it wasn't because there wasn't a need, it was total cost analysis. And sometimes it's very expensive, it is more expensive to start a small clinic when you have to, your back office and your reception and some of those fixed costs are the same. So we had moved away from it, not with the idea that we would never circle back, but when Lutheran emerged with a more comprehensive strategy, partly to look at the prevention of child abuse and neglect. And the fact is that it's 9% of our county's population, whereas a quarter of the found in abuse and neglect cases are coming out of that. And if you look at, that's not about the people who are strong and lots of really well-intended parents in our community out in West Valley, but if you just look at some of the socioeconomic factors and prevention and intergenerational trauma, violence, and poverty do drive some of those abuse and neglect kinds, it's very directly correlated. So when we started looking at a broader community solution and they were stepping forward, then it became a good time to say, "Look, here's, here's some capacity funds that can help support the mental health services for the Medicaid members or the UHL CCO members who do live in that community. It is easier for them to get local services if they can. And then we can be partners in some of the other development." And some of which would hopefully include housing, because that is an area where I think safe, affordable housing and supportive housing, where there's potentially a more rich support system in place so that people aren't necessarily needing to leave the community to find those things, when in fact, some of the child abuse neglect and abuse rates are driven by housing insecurity. I mean, we know, Commissioner Sheridan and I know that right now DHS is using data to say that 17% of the found in cases are due to housing insecurity or in, on.
For removal.
Yeah, for removal, on, what's the word that they use, I think? They, they have a term that they call the housing insecurity. It's not insecurity, but it's basically insufficient or unfavorable or something, that's not the right word.
No, I'm getting at this, yeah.
So we're trying to look at that and I appreciate if you're also aware of that need and support of it.
Because, you know, even though it is expensive to provide those services, if we don't provide them, the expense at the other end is significant. Or, you know, just the cost of our jail facilities and what that does. And I prefer that we not have a wasted life and, you know, it's pretty hard to put dollar figures on that, but those children that are living in a situation that is unhealthy, they're going to be our unhealthy parents and it just expands. And so whatever we need to do, that's an area that I think we need to really, you know, handle on. If we have to put resources into it, we have to, but we don't need to see that grow out of that West Valley to accomplish a larger geographic area of our county.
I agree.
So second topic, opioid treatment grant award. We've been notified by the state that we are going to receive an additional award. We have not seen it yet, but I just wanted to let you know. So when you saw the award and our contract amendment, Provoking Hope, because it will add capacity to our outreach model where we actually have certified recovery mentors doing active outreach at the home, at the community, certainly in the hospital, emergency departments, sometimes with first responders, paramedics, law enforcement in the community to try to engage and do intervention at the community level, peer-to-peer. So that model is working. We have funded it a number of different ways. It's getting more and more attention from the state. In fact, tomorrow, the state Health Authority would like to come out and do some success stories. So we're meeting with them and Diane, I don't know, Provoking Hope and some of the certified recovery mentors and some of our clients with a release that they choose to can tell their stories. They're really focused on opioid treatment right now, the Peds are as well, for the right reasons. So I think that the state health authority is wanting to make sure that they take advantage of success stories in communities like ours that are really doing creative things to try to get in front of that challenge. Across the state, we're doing it, at least certainly out here, they've seen some bright spots, so they're coming out. They're also putting together another, so this is, it's all federal funds for this particular model. And our award is for the rest of this biennium, so for our 1819, but it's essentially the end of a two-year federal cycle. And then they're already working on the 19 to 21 allocation from the Subsubuse Mental Health Services Administration, what they call SANSHA statewide, it's $7.7 million, so it's not an enormous grant. But it is also the funding stream that paid for our medication-assisted treatment model in the sheriff's office and the jail, for example. And we are looking at in the next funding cycle, can we continue to sustain some of our medication-assisted treatment program that we're already building? So right now, we have a Vivitrol program that will actually enhance that model and allow us to have UPHN orphaned-trained licensed medical providers. So that right now, we have four that are getting what they call their X waiver. It's just a waiver that the DEA requires them to have to give to this. But more importantly is the robust services around people and having accountability and structure and safe supports and recovery mentors and people that are at the community level working with them. So they're not just going to an outpatient, primary care doctor and getting their medication and then at risk of potential abuse with that medication, so.
Do we have anything anecdotal, I know it's early now, but just what's been, you know, staff in the jail, hearing that we're gearing?
You know, I would think that jail staff that are leading that project might be best to answer that question. I know that we have numerous individuals that are served through the specialty courts that aren't in strike court that have been part of our pilot project that's now emerging to go on year two with the Vivitrol program and that's been really helpful for them. But I don't have a story of success or even anecdotal stories that I would relay here. I think it'd be a great question for jail commander.
Yeah, interesting.
How far is Haverick Hill with Provoking Hope outside of the Midville area? Are they countywide or are they?
Yeah, they're countywide, they're certainly, their hub is here, but they are countywide and I know that they're actively engaged in other communities and they're up at the D3 hospital and they're working with law enforcement countywide and that they're in West Valley. And there's, I think, discussion about, you know, so much of what they do is out of the community, so satellite offices isn't as important as, you know, if you're doing primary care or something that's really clinic-based. But I think there are talks about them making sure that they have enough places for their CRMs to land or be present and visible if there are some times that they do that.
How many, do you know of any other programs statewide that are doing anything even remotely, like Yenko County?
Don't have that number for you either, although it'd be a nice reverse question for the state health authority folks tomorrow, I can ask them. There are certainly different types of recovery mentor support functions happening, but how many of them are really a community-based organization, a nonprofit like Provoking Hope versus a county corrections or a chemical dependency treatment program hires a few peers to walk alongside folks that they're mentoring? I think it's more difficult to see that than the model that has emerged here. But I will, I can find out and get that to you.
I'd be interested to know.
Third item, I think I already mentioned some of the schoolwork that we're doing. But countywide, there's a lot of effort going on with Lutheran's expansion and our partnership with them to make sure that we're more available to the schools as they would like us to be in the schools and that we're doing more and more prevention efforts. So I'm working on a visual that I can send to you once it's complete to just show the places that we have certain types of prevention activities and certain types of contracts in place and where Lutheran is, where HHS is present across the seven districts, so I can share that. One part of that has been the Community Prevention and Wellness Committee of the CCO making an investment over a multi-year period in prevention. So the Good Behavior Game, for example, being one of those bright spots where it's an evidence-based model for prevention. And it's really preventing all kinds of social harm and keeping kids engaged in school, but giving them more tools, more self-regulation tools and more pro-social behaviors among the peer group as they go from elementary into middle and upper where you start to see potential for juvenile delinquency or early experimentation with drugs, alcohol, sexual promiscuity, the list of things that ultimately we know that's not going to lead to healthy outcome for individual, family, and community. And as we think seriously about that role between healthcare and education and where we can support, this has been one area where we're seeing bright spots. So I wanted to just mention that I'm going to be back at some point this fall, hopefully, talking with you more about the Community Prevention and Wellness Fund, because that concept's emerging to perhaps be larger than just a CCO, but something that a community can use to leverage other funds. And the scientist, the prevention scientist, who started us down the path of thinking about lifespan of evidence-based prevention is this individual named Tony Biglin, who I know you've met. He's going to be in Newburgh on the 27th and I'll send you the invite as well, but he's going to be doing this thing called the Nurture Newburgh, I think they're calling it. But the Ford Family Foundation has brought him in for a one-day event and they're inviting community and just, you know, residents of the community, but also community leaders to come and be involved. He has this book called The Nurture Effect. He likes to talk a lot about how to create more nurturing environments for human beings to be more pro-social and healthy and how to do that across communities. And just interestingly, he's been the same person who's been vying our prevention scientists, array of services that we've picked as a CCO board and through this committee. So I thought it might be nice just to all forward on the invite, let you know. Yeah, it's a Wednesday, the 27th. And I'll send it, it's in the afternoon, but it goes into the evening, there's actually an early dinner option that they're putting on. And Denise Bacon specifically with the Ford Family Foundation has been excited to bring Kim in. They actually, once they learned about the Good Behavior Game, I believe, that they're looking at trying to bring that model to the Newburgh schools. It would be the fourth district, I think, that's now implementing that evidence-based program.
So we've never presented to them the Good Behavior Game as an option? We've never given them an entree to it?
To Newburgh?
Yeah.
We have this year specifically, and through the Early Learning Council, I believe, all the districts have had some degree of exposure over the years. Many of the implementation strategies with the districts has been to expose and invite and then where there's leadership and appetite and all of, you know, timing and capacity to make the investment. Because even if we, if this Community Prevention and Wellness Committee or the CCO has funds to bring in the specialized training, the districts have to make a human or an in-kind contribution and commit to the model. So typically, there's sort of a two-way interview process that happens to establish readiness for the adoption. And what we've been finding is that it's been better to follow the lead of the schools around their own readiness and capacity and then if it is sort of piloted here, there, and a few other places, and then there's successes happening and there becomes more interest in that that organic process works better. To imagine maybe one day that we would have complete adoption perhaps, but I think that that fate has to be at the destiny or control of the schools. That's how we've been approaching it anyways. But certainly, I'll send you the information on these couple of things I mentioned. Wanted you to know that the Community Prevention and Wellness Fund concept is under discussion. You'll probably hear about it at the CCO board meetings in the fall. But thinking about different prevention dollars that we might even administer here through the county is perhaps leveraging these other funds and winding them into common vision and strategy is some of what we're talking about. And then I was just going to say if there's anything else on the board agenda I can answer questions around, but that was really what I had for today.
I did follow, I sent you that email on that Pearl, you know, forum that's on in Lakin City.
Yep.
It's similar to the one I went to Pendleton, very informative for. And we have some of that in the West Valley again and some of our more remote areas of our county. The types of situations that elderly find themselves in reference to health issues and, but suicideism is starting to become a real prominent thing. And so I don't know if you have anybody going down, but I think they've provided a significant amount of good information in Pendleton that I know, can't think of the young lady, I sat at the dig with her a couple of different sessions over there in Pendleton from your office. I just want to follow up on that because I think that we need to become as a senior health and we've got an aging population and, you know, we've got people in the more rural parts of our county that really have a hard time accessing services.
Yeah, agreed. And when people are socially isolated and homebound, those are definitely risk factors for a number of health issues. So I did pass along to our senior behavioral health specialist, we had one that he had.
The young lady that was there was also, when you reported on the suicide program and to the formal session you had about a year ago, she was one of the young ladies that was part of that.
Was it Rena, perhaps Rena Bonham Clayton?
I've got her card upstairs with that material from that meeting and I'll have to dig it out. But anyway, just, just wanted to mention that as long as you're here, I think it's important.
Yeah, thank you.
So we'll move on to the preliminary consent agenda and just if there's, if there are any questions about, you've got a number of items, that if you have any questions for Silas to address, may have to be the time. You see anything you want to pull off or any questions you have, Commissioner?
No, I don't agree, I don't see anything that Silas isn't on top of.
Okay.
And if he's not married with me, I mean, you know, I look to you two for that area.
Well, he's got it nailed down, that's for sure. All right, well, don't see anything on here that we need to, questions about executive committee today over the CCO office and Board of Health tomorrow, Monday, Saturday.
Correct. And then a meeting with you afterwards.
And Tuesday at nine and now meeting with you at 9:30. Okay, and where should we do that?
We can come before office.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right. So.
Well, I'll see you three more times, I'll be forward tomorrow at 10:00.
Lucky you.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah.
Living right there.
Thanks, Silas.
Thanks, Silas.
How'd you get so lucky?
You're a lucky guy. Look at how you're looking at me.
Glad you all have come.
Enjoy it.
See you.
See you later at 4 o'clock, two more hours.
Yeah, I'll be there.
So then we've got the preliminary consent agenda, looks like everything is, is going to be a go for Thursday. And we'll move on to item D, the non-consent agenda items we have beyond. And we do have an executive session, so we'll close the, we'll recess the informal work session and open up the executive session.
I gotta read this before we. Right, so we're out of executive session, no final decisions were made, but consensus on the board was conveyed to the staff. Thank you.
So we will conclude with Commissioner update, Commissioner Premzic?
I don't really have anything to offer right now on, I do have, I do have a couple of projects that I'm currently working on. I've got Gil coming back with Nathan and another staff member working on a project in the Dundee area that could be very significant with 35 luxury RV parking facilities and a small hotel on that property that is abandoned right there where the.
The clock, the clock used to be called the clock, was it Fort Graces or what is it that came up?
Just before you get to the Fort Graces, yeah, that whole corner there, yeah, it's, there's a big crangl.
Yeah, okay, so that property.
Yeah, he started clearing it.
Yeah, I saw that.
And he's got all the plans laid out. We're meeting to talk about how we can assist with putting in a sewer system because that's county property and they can't connect to the city system. So he's got the property, he's got his plan for how they would handle that. Anyway. Anyway, we're working.
So it's, someone bought that?
Yeah, it's owned, in fact, he's the one that's already starting the clearing of it. And he's going to, they've been dumping concrete, rock and stuff in there for years.
Yeah.
So he's got a pressure coming in, he's going to harvest all of the gravel out of there and sell it and he's got a level of property. It's, it's quite a, quite a project and it will be, be an excellent economic benefit to the community that a lot of people weren't getting it ready. And then the tourism aspect of it with, it's going to be a very upscale motor park similar to the one down on the coast, very, and then a small hotel that he's got out of plans for, so.
So that's, except for the part where that's up against the road, that's, that's county, but the rest of it belongs to the city?
No.
It's all county?
It's all county. See, once you cross the road where Fort Graces, that sign says.
Fox Farm.
Yeah, once you, that road, it's county that between there and where it connects up to Newburgh, there's a large section of that.
So it's all county?
Which is why, if you recall last year, two years ago, what used to be the Someplace Else Tower.
Yeah.
Went through the county.
Yeah.
Planning Commission and the Planning Department because from about where that's located, back to Fox Farm, most of those properties along the highway are technically county property.
Oh, that's interesting.
Between Dundee and other.
Right, wow, that's exciting.
Anyway, we're working on that and I'm very anxious, Jill was excited when it come down and look at that. So we'll see, more to come.
Great, thank you for that patient. All right, well, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we'll adjourn today's informal session and appreciate everybody.